Welcome, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to a video Benita Springs Town Hall meeting. And we have some wonderful guests with us this afternoon, and I hope everybody is staying safe at this difficult time. With us today, we have Dr. Antonucci, President and CEO with Lee Health, State Senator Kathleen Pasadomo, County Commissioner Ray Sandelli, Benita Springs Fire Chief Greg DeWitt, and I also have with me from the Benita Springs Outreach Committee, Andres Paz, who will be doing some interpretation into Spanish at this time. And I'd like to ask Chief Greg DeWitt to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting, please.
Be honored, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America and to the republic of the country, one nation for God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
For all. Thank you, Chief. We continue to monitor new directives actively being received by both the White House Administration and Governor DeSantis's office in Tallahassee. In our efforts to take all precaution and proactivity to protect our public health and safety of our community, we have decided that a virtual town meeting is best in the interest of our community. The city of Benita Springs is using Zoom to hold this virtual town hall meeting. I would now like to ask our Communications Director from the city of Benita Springs, Laura Taylor, to explain how this is going to be broadcast. Thank you.
So in order to ensure the public has the ability to view the meeting, the city's Communications Department will broadcast the meeting through all city channels. Those channels include Benita TV, Comcast Channel 98, Summit Broadband Cable Channel 96, Hotwire Channel 398, CenturyLink Prism TV 87. And the city will also broadcast this live on our city website, as well as rebroadcasts on the city website and cable channels. The city had also asked the public to send any public comment, and those were provided to us by email, and we have shared those with all panelists. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Laura. Andres, would you like to say a few words for the folks that might be listening in Spanish?
Absolutely. Unmute myself, and you might have to mute you, although we are more than six feet away. There's a little bit of echo between you and I. So para las personas que inglés no es su primer idioma, me han invitado a esta reunión para compartir un poco el mensaje que tiene todos los invitados a esta reunión y más adelante les vamos a proporcionar, bien sea las respuestas de manera escrita o a través de closed captions, como decimos nosotros, a todas las preguntas que nos han mandado.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And thank you, Laura. So at this time, I'd like to introduce one by one and have each one of our guests today have a few words. And a lot of these questions are medical in nature, so I'd like to start just for introductions, no specific questions at this point, with Dr. Antonucci, President and CEO of Lee Health. Welcome and thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really a pleasure to be here with you today. It's hard to believe that it was a little over a month ago that we saw our first patient with COVID-19. And since then, we opened up our Incident Command Center and have been running that consistently for 37 days. We have taken a lot of action in this past month, including stopping of non-urgent surgery, as dictated by the governor. We began offering free telehealth service and to this date have conducted over 10,000 of those visits. We set up remote testing and have done over 4,400 tests in our remote centers. We've been doing daily media briefing. We've limited visitation in our hospitals and set up separate tents outside of our EDs so patients with respiratory symptoms can be kept separate from others. We've been able to open up 216 beds at Gulf Coast Medical Center that were not scheduled to open through June due to the great cooperation of our regulatory organizations. And most importantly, about a week ago, we began our in-house testing. Testing was quite frustrating initially, and there were long waits, three to 10 days sometimes. And any given day, we had three to 400 tests that were out pending. And now that we're doing testing in-house with our rapid method, we have zero to three or four pending tests a day. We've had great success in our social media connections. We have had 133,000 unique visits to our website and 162,000 page views on our COVID-19 site. So we're really trying to educate the community as best we can. Just to give you an idea of where we are today, we have 67 COVID-positive patients in the hospital and a total of 292 patients that are either COVID-positive or suspected to be COVID-positive carriers. Now, the important thing is that is seven less patients than we had a week ago and 10 less total patients than we had a week ago. So we seem to be at a plateau, and we potentially could be coming down off that plateau, although it's a little bit early to tell. We're certainly hoping that that's the case. Our census is about 58%, so we still have adequate capacity. And our ventilator use is at about 34%, so we still have adequate ventilators to use. We have developed a surge plan in case the numbers go up. And I am very pleased to announce that we have been selected to participate in the Mayo Clinic study on convalescent plasma. And for those of you who don't have a medical background, that's the use of the plasma from patients that have recovered from COVID-19 so that we can garner the antibodies that are there and try to treat some patients and see if that causes improvement. It is not proven to be effective, but it's a study that's being done by Mayo Clinic, and we are one of their test sites. So a lot of activity going on within the system, and we're happy to take any questions that you might have later in the presentation.
Wonderful, Dr. Antonucci. Thank you very much. And our next guest with us, who are very glad to have her, is State Senator Kathleen Pasadomo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for participating in this important meeting. I just want to say that it's really, we know how difficult this is for all of you, for residents, all of our citizens in Southwest Florida. As Dr. Antonucci said, a month ago, this would have been unthinkable. So many of us since then are at home and unable to spend time with our friends and families. A lot of people are working in essential jobs, law enforcement, healthcare, grocery stores, and they're making sure we're all safe, healthy, and address the things we need. So many people, over 650,000 people have been laid off from their jobs as of now, they're furloughed without a paycheck. We have parents who are balancing working from home with childcare and online learning. And then some people are very sick and being taken care of by the very important healthcare personnel in our communities. So what we are doing as a state is very important to all of us. They're important to slowing the spread of the virus and ensuring we have the equipment and the workers to care for the people in need. What is our government doing to support you? I can assure you that leaders at all levels of government, federal, state, and local, are working round the clock in such a short period of time to help during this difficult time. I know it seems like you're not accomplishing much, but I can tell you that it's not lack of trying. And a lot of good things are being accomplished. Rather than go into it and probably take me hours, if you want to check, I have a website that has resources, federal, state, and local resources that people can go to. And one of the other things, I am on the phone many times a day with my colleagues and with representatives in the governor's office. And the concerns that are expressed to me, either by phone or an email, from my constituents, I make sure to pass on to the governor's office. And I'll be happy to, as well, answer any questions that you have as we go in this important...
Wonderful. Thank you, Senator. And next, I'd like to introduce from Benita Springs, our County Commissioner with Lee County, Ray Sandelli.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to join us and for your questions, and hope everyone as well. Quick intro to the county. We continue to monitor the health-related numbers. As we will confirm where they are, where they are now, those actions going forward will be predicated on that. So where are we against the apex? We want to be sure that we're not getting complacent. It's important that we continue to, you know, keep going forward. Updates on the status of our healthcare team, first responders, can't say enough about the team. So thank you for all you're doing. We're always learning to see where we can connect with the families and where we can provide support throughout the community. And there's a campaign I'd like to mention called Stronger Together, and it's something that we're doing in cooperation with Collier County. And I would encourage you to take a look at that website, consider the support we can give to our healthcare team, and make whatever accommodations you can possibly make. Second thing is, we're assessing the impact on the actions that we've taken to date. Is it working? What adjustments can we make or should we make? We're looking at certainly the financial challenges, as the senator said, facing our community. And we're looking at the immediate needs for basic outreach. You can't overlook the near-term things. And then next is, how do we continue to operate as the county? We're making every effort to message as one. There's so much information out there, it can be terribly confusing. So we're trying to build a message as one. I encourage you to go to leecounty.gov. The website is full of information. We opened a new portal last week on financial solutions for small businesses. Very easy to maintain, leads you through it very simply. We're working closely with John Talmadge from our Economic Development Office and Chris Spire from the Horizon Council. They've been invaluable in looking at the go-forward position. We also want to be mindful of all of our residents, and those includes those with special needs and such as the homeless. The revenue picture, as I will see, is and is changing. We're looking through the new budget right now and developing that. And finally, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, initial planning to reopen. We're not given a start date. This will all be data-driven. We'll prioritize and phase in for openings. We're going to listen and learn from others what are best practices. And certainly, our encouragement is get everybody back to work. And finally, I'd like to just make a note, we had an unfortunate incident at the airport a couple of weeks ago with the fire with the rental cars. I want to thank all the mayors, which I've done personally, but also want to thank all of our firefighters and first responders and our communities for the incredible response to this unfortunate. Thanks. It's another example of truly who we are, stronger together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. And I'd like to now introduce our Fire Chief, Greg DeWitt, from Benita Springs. Chief?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to tell everybody that the Benita Springs Fire Department stands ready to help in any way that we can with the city and the county. As Commissioner Sandelli said, we were there helping our brothers and sisters at the crash fire and rescue to assist them with that. And we're there to help Lee County EMS and Lee Health on all the emergency calls that we run to. Just to dovetail off of what Dr. Antonucci said, you know, statewide right now, we're at about 23,000 confirmed cases. On Lee County alone, we're at 681. And then Benita Springs itself, according to the statistics today, at about 11:30, we have 61 confirmed cases in Benita Springs. Rest assured that your fire department is adequately equipped right now with the PPE, that if you need us, we'll be there for you. And we're out there to make a difference and keep everybody safe. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. And, you know, I'll answer any question you have at a later time.
No, absolutely. Thank you, Chief. And, you know, we've received a numerous amount of questions. A lot of, none of them are, I guess, quote-unquote "identical" because certainly, but a lot of them are very similar in nature and similar in subject matter. I do want to give a quick shout-out before we start taking the questions and getting some responses that, literally for the past month, I want to thank Mayor Kevin Ruane from Sanibel, who took the initiative, who is currently serving also as our president of the Florida League of Mayors. We have had daily calls with each mayor, Mayor Bill Ribble from Astero, certainly Mayor Henderson, Randy Henderson from Fort Myers, Mayor Joe Coviello. And we've actually had a split from Fort Myers because we had Mayor Anita Saracota, and we have the new mayor, Mayor Ray Murphy, Mayor Kevin Ruane from Sanibel, County Commissioner Brian Hammond, who's chairman of the Lee County Commissioner, along with State Senator Lizbeth Benacrista. And we have been on the phone, literally, every day for 30 straight days. I think we took a few Sundays off, but other than that, we have been in constant communication. What are you hearing? What about this? What about that? What's working? What's not working? So I want to let them know how appreciative I am and how valuable that is for not only Benita Springs, but Lee County and the state. Dr. Antonucci, I like getting back to the fact that we've had several, several medical questions. And so I've lumped them up as best I can. And the first question came from Liz Strikeman. How many cases are there of COVID-19, and we've touched on this, in Benita Springs, and any deaths from the virus since the date? And any thoughts on extending the quarantine time?
Yeah, I believe the chief gave those data just a few minutes ago, specific to Benita. And with regard to testing, right now, we've set up two mobile test sites, one in Fort Myers and one in Cape Coral. We do not have any plans right now to expand that, given the fact that we've been able to manage the volumes quite readily. And as you can imagine, it's a pretty significant lift to be able to set these sites up and have the adequate staffing to do that. So at the present time, we don't have any plans to put one in Benita specifically.
Thank you, Dr. Antonucci. And because a lot of people are asymptomatic, what are their, what advice can we give for people that are asymptomatic, and any plans for large-scale testing, which we've already touched on as well?
I think if you look at what we're facing with regard to testing, the current testing looks for the virus, tries to pick up the actual RNA that's in the virus. The next wave of testing is going to be what's called serology testing or blood testing. And that would detect whether a patient has been exposed to the virus or not. And I think that's what's going to be most useful in doing mass screenings to determine what the status of the population is. The limit, both studies have limitations, and both tests have limitations. The test for the virus has limitations, that it doesn't necessarily pick up every single case of the virus. If the test is positive, it tells you good information that the virus is there. But if it's negative, there's, it could be up to a 30% chance that you're still carrying the virus, but it just didn't get picked up in the test. Similarly, some of the challenges we face with the blood testing is that we don't really know what adequate levels of antibodies give you immunity. So that information is changing daily, and it's really a rapidly moving target. But as we move into a recovery phase, I think what we're going to be relying on is more serologic testing, which should be available, we are told, within the next couple of weeks, within one to two weeks, we should have FDA-approved serologic testing that could be used on a large scale.
Thank you, doctor. And at this point, I'd like to call on Andres Paz to translate, please.
From, well, here's what I think we should do, Mayor. There are a couple of very important points that we're touching here. And what I'd like to do is, I would like to give like a broad overview at the end of the conference, and then give people the ability to access all the answers to all these questions in Spanish, whether it's through our website, through our social media, or through our newsletter, like any channels in Benita Springs, so that we don't have to duplicate all the time for, because every single question that we're asking here, it's important, and a lot of people want to know about it.
No, absolutely. Thank you so much. That's great. And Chief DeWitt, I believe you had a follow-up on that point?
Yeah, you made the comment, the question was about asymptomatic, and follow-up on what Dr. Antonucci said, is I just want the public to know that when we run a call right now, it's been our policy, we've had it out for about two weeks now, that any patient, whether it's a broken leg, or stubbed toe, or help I fall and I can't get up, we are going to put a surgical mask on that patient because everybody is, there's about 50 to 60% of the people, as Dr. Antonucci said, asymptomatic. They don't have the signs and symptoms of this virus. So I just want the public to know that. Don't be offended if we hand you a mask when we get on scene. It could be a car accident, it could be any one of those things, because we've found out from our brothers and sisters around the, around the county and around the state, that these people are asymptomatics. And six, eight, 10 days go by, and then they start developing this, and we've run this call on unprotected. So I just wanted to follow up on that just one second. So thank you.
No, no, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Chief. And I guess, Dr. Antonucci, the next question would come, and I probably won't say it right, but it revolves around the hydroxychloroquine, I'm sure there's a better pronunciation for that, I apologize, and any Z-Pak. I know there, it's in various stages of testing, but this came from Deanna Dzinski, asking about that, asking about hospitalization rates and comparison as to why, in her, in her question, that the hospitalization rate and mortality rate seem to be higher in Lee County than Collier County?
The, well, I'll address the second question first regarding the mortality rates. The mortality rates now have actually stabilized. Initially, when there was only very few deaths, the numbers were too small to really make comparisons. So as a result, you know, with one death, you could raise your mortality rate by 20%. But now that we've seen the number of deaths we've seen in the county, those mortality rates are about the same and pretty much average for where you'd expect to see in the country. As it relates to the hydroxychloroquine, one of the challenges we face is that there really has not been adequate studies to determine whether the drug works. And as a result, there are some significant side effects. There was a study that was just started in Brazil that used hydroxychloroquine along with the Z-Pak, and they had to stop the study within six days because of the cardiac side effects that patients were having. There is a problem with the two drugs in that they, it can affect the rhythm, the electrical rhythm through the heart that could lead to significant cardiac challenges. As we began using those drugs here, what we discovered was the same thing. We started to see electrical changes. So our medical staff yesterday actually had a conference on that and decided that they should discourage the use of both of the drugs together. And they will use the hydroxychloroquine independently, when it's in the judgment of the physicians, to use it. But again, the jury's still out. There are 100 studies going on right now around the country and around the world, looking at hydroxychloroquine, does it have an effect? When should it be used? How should it be used? Along with other antivirals. The fact of the matter is, we just don't have good clinical evidence right now. So we're learning on the fly, and we're learning as we go.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The next question comes from Councilwoman Amy Caramba in District One, and she had asked, what role could Lee Health play in any plan to reopen or relax the stay-at-home orders, and for example, increasing testing capacity?
Well, when, when the serology tests are available, of course, we will be utilizing those in our remote sites and otherwise. So we are ready to do that. As it relates to opening up various businesses, we certainly will provide any type of counsel to the local municipalities, whether it's the cities, the county, or at the state level, regarding the impact that that might have on the overall health of the community. It's important to remember that we still do not have a vaccine. And although we know that the social distancing has done a very good job at flattening the curve, we do want to prevent a further spike in cases. And the way we can do that is by continuing to social distance. Now, if that, if those social distancing criteria can be met, and with open businesses, then I think we could certainly support that. But the issue of continued hand washing, wearing masks, staying six feet away are something that we're going to have to live with for a while, until we have an adequate vaccine for this virus.
Thank you, Dr. Antonucci. She had, Councilwoman Caramba had a follow-up. What, in your opinion, or how may elective, elective medical procedures be restarted, which thereby utilizing the capacity of surgery centers to allow some furlough health workers to go back to work?
Yeah, that's really a great question, and something that we're working on right now. The first step would, of course, have to be a lifting of the executive order of Governor DeSantis to allow non-urgent surgery to be done. Once that's done, then what we will do is we will build processes in place to make sure that not only the patients are safe, but our staff is safe with regard to the ability to do testing before people have surgeries, et cetera. So we're actively looking at those plans right now. But the first step would be a lifting of the executive order from the governor.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Antonucci. Another question from Joan Burton. Where are we currently with on the PPE?
The personal protective equipment is critical to caring for these COVID patients, and in fact, all infectious disease patients. Right now, we're in good shape with our PPE. We are getting supplies. Something that I wanted to mention that Senator Pasadomo talked about was the support of our state government. We are working with our local EOC here in the county and also the state EOC. And they have been extremely helpful in getting us the PPE that we need. And we're getting deliveries every few days to keep it, to keep our people safe. And so far, we've been able to meet the need of the community.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Antonucci. And then several folks, so I won't be using names, but multiple folks had touched on the asymptomatic, which we've touched on, the hydrochloro, hydrochloro, hydro, thank you. Yes, they asked about that. And will, will individuals be able to get their prescriptions refilled, whether for this or for other items, doctor?
Yeah, at the current, at the current time, our supplies of hydrochloroquine are adequate. And certainly, there's been a, an increase in production because of the potential utilization with COVID-19. Don't forget, now, this drug has been in use for a very long time and has a number of medical indications. So it certainly has been around. But I know that our supply here at the hospital is, is fine, and we've got enough of the medication to take care of the patients here. And I would suspect that the outside pharmacies also are adequately stocked.
Thank you, doctor. And then a lot of folks had asked about, obviously, when will the test results be known versus who has the virus versus who doesn't have it versus who's recovered from the virus? And I know a lot of times, statistics and numbers can say different things to different people. What would be your best explanation on the numbers? And if somebody has quarantined and is now better, do they kind of drop off the statistics? Or how does that work from your point of view, doctor?
Yeah, with regard to the testing, you know, as I mentioned earlier, one of the biggest game changers was the ability to do rapid testing in our hospital and not have to send the tests out either to the state or to the commercial labs, where we were waiting up to eight to 10 days for results. Now, we can do these rapid tests in the hospital and have results within 45 minutes. So even tests that we're doing at our remote centers, we're getting those back certainly no later than 24 hours. And that's made an enormous difference in our ability to manage patients, not only in the hospital, but relieve anxiety for patients that are outside. As I mentioned, because of the limitations of the test, we still are recommending that if patients are symptomatic, that they remain in basic quarantine for up to two weeks to make sure that they're not going to, going to, you know, spread the virus. And that's just one of the limitations that we're dealing with when we're dealing with testing. The other type of testing is the blood testing, as I mentioned, that will determine whether you've been exposed and have recovered. But it really comes down to whether you're without symptoms. So if you've had the disease and now you're without symptoms, and your blood test is showing that you have antibodies, the conventional wisdom right now is that you can pretty much resume normal activity.
Wonderful, doctor. Thank you. And thank you to the several folks that asked that last set of questions. I'm now going to let Dr. Antonucci catch his breath for a moment and ask Senator Pasadomo, we have a question from Victoria Conte, which says, when is the antibody testing going to be available, and how will it be distributed and accessed, Senator? accessed, Senator? You may be muted, Senator. I apologize. We may have lost Senator Pasadomo. I am not sure.
My on?
Oh, there you are, Senator. I apologize.
I think somebody muted me. Maybe they sometimes people don't like politicians. But no, that no, that's a very good question. The question about testing and how the state is going to react to testing is probably one of the most critical things that is on our plate with regard to getting back to work and and where we're going to go from here. Um the governor has has been very proactive with discussions about availability of testing, has offer has we have on order thousands and thousands of test kits and they're they're on their way, I I'm told. Uh one of the things that we need to consider is, and I think the governor is looking at this, is to to put together a team of people that are in the healthcare industry, the business community, uh the political community to determine uh you know, a testing committee uh and and how effectively we can provide both the antibody test and the COVID tests to our citizens who want to get back to work. And so I think that that um once we have tests that are reliable, and as Dr. Antonucci said, we're not, there are so many out there. And an interesting thing that I heard the other day was the FDA is approving all these different tests, but not all of them um have gone through the rigorous process that we usually do. So um like the gold standard test that Dr. Antonucci was talking about apparently only has a 90% accuracy rate. So I think we have to make sure we have good tests that provide valid information and that are widely available. And I know the governor is working on that concept as we speak.
Thank you, Senator. The next question comes from Benita Springs resident Ben Hirschenson, which says, how will the opening of businesses in Benita Springs be coordinated between the state, county, and city officials?
Oh, that's a that's a really good question. And I and and it I think it's something that will be done. First of all, there's been a lot of discussion about maybe on a national level about whether there is good cooperation. I can assure you that on a state level, um and and you can see it the way uh you've already been operating, our local governments and our state uh government and state officials have been working cooperatively. And I and I and I think that will continue. So when it comes down to opening of the state, uh state officials, local governments, and of course, the business community are pretty much on the same page, which is we don't want to send people back to work unless it's safe. And um I think there's also um a uh a consensus that the only way to tell if it's safe is if to to be able to tell whether or not someone ha has had COVID-19 and has the antibodies or whether they're at risk. So we're going to add a component, not just of the testing um of you know, the of um what of the antibodies and the COVID-19 test, but also the testing of um the temperature testing and all these things. So I getting back to what I said earlier, that if we do have a testing committee, I think they're going to all look together, and this would be people from all over the state, I'm hoping, that will discuss how we're going to do it, a rollout, community by community, based on information from each community.
Thank you, Senator. The next question for you, Senator, comes from Benita Springs resident Ron Pure. What do each um how do you propose or your thoughts on reducing funding plans and programs in light of revenue shortfalls at all levels of government, but certainly in particular to state government, which you work with?
Yeah, that that's also another good question. Uh first of all, I think it would be premature to talk about reductions uh until we know the full extent of where we're going to be. Um as you may know, the state so far has expended about $600 million of funding related to the COVID-19 crisis today. Um we have a $4 billion reserve uh that for purposes like this. Uh we are coming into hurricane season. So it is my uh I I would presume that we are going to be fine from a budget standpoint through the end of the summer. Uh the the choices that we're going to have to make are going to be for next year's budget and whether or not we're going to have sufficient funds to to meet all the expenses that we are that we had incurred and will incur and putting more funds back into reserves. But I think we're going to be fine through this crisis uh unless, of course, we have a significant hurricane uh damage this summer.
Right. Thank you, Senator. And another question for you, Senator Pasadomo, from Mrs. Joy in Benita Springs. Uh Governor DeSantis has stated he wants Florida schools to begin opening. Um Florida is set to hit its peak in two weeks. So how do you see schools opening or reopening? And as the father of two children, one that's currently taking classes online at Florida State and one that's taking classes online at Bishop Row, how do you see the reopening of schools or soft opening or that? What does that process look like from your point of view, Senator?
Well, you know, uh right now, we're getting almost to the end of the school year in any event. Uh you know, it's one more month to go. Usually, I think the school ends at the end of May. Um so the governor is looking at it, I know. Uh Department of Education is looking at it. Uh some of the factors that I think you need to to consider are because people do not want to go back to work unless they are sure they're going to be safe. Uh if the schools reopen too soon, think about this, we're going to have teachers that will not want to go back to work, uh will have school driver, bus drivers, uh uh janitorial personnel, you know, all the ancillary personnel that might be uncomfortable going back to work. So that may be difficult to open the schools. So I think the governor's going to have to take all that into consideration. And I I have actually spoken with the Commissioner of Education myself with a number of issues brought to me by the local school district personnel. And so hopefully they'll take that into consideration when they determine whether or not to reopen the schools.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much. I'll allow you to take a sip of water and move on to Lee County Commissioner Ray Sandelli. Um this actually, this question came Commissioner Sandelli from another member of our city council. Uh what planning efforts are Lee County making to reopen our reopening our communities and the assessment of lost county revenue? And actually, that came from Councilwoman Amy Caramba as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Amy. Um I think that uh we're certainly looking at a different revenue picture. Um you know, some of the revenue that we have is delayed by a month or two. So we won't know the effect of that until those revenues and revenue sharing comes in probably in a couple of months. So we are in the initial stages of doing a a new budget. Um we uh our folks are telecommuting as much as they can. Uh we have not talked about furloughs, although we always have contingency plans in place. Um we're uh looking at a number of different issues about what has to happen with revenue picture, what has to happen with expenses. It's the same as we all do at home and same to do with our businesses.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner. Um Councilwoman Laura Carr want had a question of what is the unified message where um we're intending to obviously send to our governor, uh Ron DeSantis and will will you be seeking more uh of our brother and sister cities joining us to telling the governor about the state of emergency and kind of the timing on that? Or how are we looking at that currently from Lee County?
I think a couple of things they have been touching on before. First of all, I think the the best thing that we've done is that we've been in touch uh at the county level with the with all the cities. And and as you have you been a participant in all of that, Mr. Mayor, you know, that conversation happens every day. Um and then our connection with um the uh the League of Cities. So we have a pretty good collective picture, uh not only on what are the nuances of each marketplace, but also what are some of the challenges. I think those are the communications that we put together, develop a plan going forward. Um I think that uh we will we will solidify that. I think you're seeing in some other parts of the country where you have regional areas that are looking at how they solve the problem collectively. And I think we'll be doing something similar to that. Do we do it as a Southwest Florida region? Do we do it something that's in cooperation with the League of Cities? Um and I think once once we have that, uh it'll be a it'll be easy to take it to the governor and say, here's who we are, here's what we see, here's we have a collective agenda. And I think it'll be more collective than it will be individual.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Councilwoman Carr also asked where we are currently with with some thought on reopening some beaches, perhaps only for walking, swimming, paddle boarding, uh knowing that people would, you know, uh practice uh social distancing six feet apart?
Well, we sure all miss the beaches, don't we?
Yes.
Uh it's 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 a big part of our lifestyle down here. Uh I think what we're looking at is we've developed a about a five-tier plan. Uh so this will be a phase in process. And let me let me stop by saying, everything we do going forward will be data driven. What we don't want to do is move too quickly, open up, find out there's some repercussions for opening up fast, have to shut it down again and go through this process again. You know, I think in all of this uncertainty, what we are looking for is some stability. And I think our constituents, you know, deserve that. So we will move uh ahead very carefully. The data has to support whatever actions we take. We'll do that conjunction with our healthcare system. Um and I think that's the way to go. So it's um it's a process. I think there's always a balance, you know, between the health of our community and the economics of our community. And that's the challenge that we're all dealing with right now is what is that balance? How do we provide some stability and some hope, you know, in the community that we're coming, you know, through this?
No, tha- thank you, Commissioner. And Jeff Chipwood had a question for you regarding uh thoughts on churches holding worship services with proper precautions of spacing, et cetera, and what what options in terms of worshiping uh is the county looking at currently?
Well, you know, we're protected by the First Amendment, you know, of freedom to worship. Uh and so that's key. Um I I do want to congratulate all of the faith-based uh organizations we have because they have really embraced uh social distancing and all the things that we're trying to achieve as a community as a whole. It's not been easy. You know, for those of us who do attend church, you know, we miss it a lot, uh just as our kids miss the teachers and vice versa. So um I think part of that has to be on an individual basis. Does the facility, does the church have the ability to uh move people into different rooms, to do broadcasting, uh some of those things? I think they've gotten used to it. It was interesting at Easter to watch the Pope in Rome and then to watch Cardinal Dolan in New York.
At St. Peters, I might add. He was at St.
In St. Peters, that's correct. That's correct. So um I think I think the the faith-based community is getting used to that. But look, we miss being together, not only for worship services, but for all the good that you do, you know, within the church itself. Um and and trust me, like any community right now, they need our support more than ever. So um I think that's it's an individual basis, but each facility, how they communicate and what their needs are. But I think we're all looking forward to getting back and we're speaking together.
Wonderful, Commissioner. Thank you so much. I'll I'll let you catch your breath as well and ask Fire Chief Greg DeWitt. Uh Chief, is Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District receiving calls related to COVID-19? And if so, please update us, Chief, on what we're seeing as a whole in the community of Benita Springs?
Yeah, we 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 do experience those on a daily basis. Uh it kind of waxes and wanes. You know, when this first came out around the 16th of March, we were running, you know, six, eight, 10 of these COVID calls a day or or possible possible COVID calls. You know, statistics has shown that of those six or eight that we're running, maybe one or two of them actually test positive. But you know, education's key, just uh the distancing is key. But we are running it. Uh we have seen a drop off in calls. We're about two to 5% light on calls. And I think some of that is, you know, the worried well have gotten the message either from Dr. Antonucci or from the media or from whoever that says, hey, if you're sick or if you think you're sick, let's stay at home, self-isolate, self-monitor for a while and see how bad it is and only call us if you really need us because we don't want to tax the health system. So I think they've gotten that message. It's either that or, as you know, we're running these calls every day and we're out there in it. They could be nervous that we have the that we have the virus and now we're going to bring it to them. Uh I'd like to assure everybody that, you know, we have had our share of scares. Uh currently, right now, there is nobody in the Benita Springs Fire Control Rescue District out on self-quarantine or out on self-isolation, or it is being monitored. Anybody that we have had out that has been tested, has tested negative. So we're doing our part with the PPE and protecting ourselves and the public when we go out into the public to uh to uh you know, to social distance and to cover up. Uh when we're going to publics to shop for food, we uh we've made a mandate as a Benita Springs Fire Department that you have to cover up, you have to wear the mask, you have to do all those things. So calls have come down, you know, it kind of waxes and wanes. Let's go over the last two to three days. We has we have seen a drop in call volume and in pandemic volume.
Thank you, Chief. And a follow-up question is, or how are you protecting fire personnel and emergency personnel when they do respond to COVID-19? What precautions or extra precautions, Chief, are you taking for your team with you?
All right. What it is is, um you know, we have a set of criteria that if we have to do certain procedures, we will, we call it MEG, which is mask, eye protection, gloves and gown up. We will protect our personnel to that extent, that if we have to give a, let's say, a breathing treatment, we bring the the patient outside of the home, out into the open air, and we do that procedure. We do that uh for everybody, you know, with Lee County uh Emergency Management and the Dispatch Center and Lee County EMS, we all are working together. So if you call that 911, you need help. Either dispatcher or us will ask you to come out of your house. So we're not going into there. We're not in a confined area. We're bringing you out into the public. We're doing what we call a doorway or a door a doorway triage. How are you feeling? Can you come outside? Bring you out there so we're not in that confined area. So if you do cough or sneeze or something like that, we are at least social distancing our way six six feet apart. Uh in the event we run out of PPE, we do have, because of our background, we do have hazmat suits, Tyvek suits that we have issued to all the trucks that we will decon down. So we are pretty protected right now.
Thank you, Chief. And I'd like, Chief, to let you at this time, for anything that wasn't asked or discussed today from your point of view, what would you like the residents of Benita Springs and Lee County and the state of Florida to know?
Just like I think everybody in the room, you had mentioned it before, Mr. Mayor, that basically we are on calls. I have at least three state calls a week on Monday, Wednesday and Fridays, and we have a county call on Thursdays. So we're in constant contact with our partners, either Lee County, Lee County EMS, Lee County Emergency Management Management, or the state of Florida. That's where we're getting all our information. So that's first and foremost. We're all very, very informed. And this changes on a daily basis. If we'd had this last week, we wouldn't have had the the gowns to go on. We wouldn't have had certain things or protections that we that we put out there. As I said in the beginning, we're going to come, and this came out on Monday and on a state call Monday. Everybody's getting a mask. We're running on somebody with a broken leg, may not be symptomatic, they're getting a mask. That's what's coming down from the state level. So that's what's protecting us. The other thing I'd like to say is, as a community of Benita Springs, the community is is overwhelming. They are the outpouring of support that they're giving first responders, whether it be police, fire, EMS. They are doing so much for us. And not that it's not appreciated, but you know what? We're out there every day. We still have jobs. We're still receiving a paycheck. I would just like to say, if anybody would like to do something, let's do something for people who don't have that job, who have been furloughed or laid off. Go to the Benita Springs Assistance Office, help them out. You know, we appreciate it. You know, Subway's dropped off stuff, Quail West has dropped off stuff for us. Individuals have dropped off like platters. And we do appreciate it very much. But there are other people other than us that need it more, more, more than we do.
Chief, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And I want to let you take a sip of water and get get back to Commissioner Sandelli for questions, Commissioner, that maybe we didn't ask or didn't come up today that you would like to add at this point?
I think that uh, you know, we've done a number of interviews and we've done a number of programs like this. And we we And we we stress the amount, and I think the Chief DeWitt just talked about that, about acting as a team. And I think that is important. I did an interview one time and I said, there's only one word that means more to me than team and that's family. And I think when we take this team and we start caring for each other as a family, then I think we're really in the right spot because there's a lot of metrics that we're going to use, whether it be from healthcare, whether it be financially. But as the chief said, when we start caring about each other, all of us in our community, it's a very generous community. And and I think once we make that transition from team, we really enrich and we think of each other on a very personal basis. And so I would encourage all of you to do that. There's a lot of need out there right now and it's probably appreciated more now than ever before. So let's let's go ahead. I think there's the lights at the end of the tunnel, maybe a little bit dim right now, but we're moving in that direction. And there's great hope and I think there's great opportunity, you know, for our community, for our nation going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Senator Pasadomo, I'd like to come back with you, and I know we covered a lot of information, but anything else from your point of view that maybe was not discussed here today or that you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you. One of the biggest challenges we have right now that we haven't addressed is the unemployment issue and the fact that at this point, over 650,000 Floridians have or are trying to file for unemployment. And this gets back to what Chief DeWitt said. There are a lot of people that are hurting out there. And unfortunately, we've our system is so clogged with applications that we're just not getting them processed. And I just want everybody to know that every day, all day, since the end of session, my office and my colleagues' offices throughout the state have been trying to help people with their employment applications. The the good news is that the federal dollars have started to come in and people are receiving those checks. I am told by Department of Economic Opportunity that the 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 funds for unemployment for those that have automatic deposits are going to be coming out very soon. It's tragic to know that that people applied for unemployment at the beginning of March or late February, still having to receive those dollars. And we're doing everything we can to get people the money that they need to live. And and as we get that done, we're going to then do everything we can to get people back to work in a safe manner. And I can tell you that the state government officials, the governor and every agency is working around the clock to accomplish that. And, you know, I'll call my office if if you need some help because that's what we're here for.
Senator, you're always there for Benita Springs and I, believe me, I know that and anybody that knows you knows that. So thank you and God bless you for this information and you can almost count on hearing from Benita Springs. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Antonucci and Lee Health at this point, I mean, we covered a lot there again, maybe maybe you more so than most, but other things that Lee Health might like to add at this point that we didn't cover?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. What I really like to do is thank the people of Lee County for taking social distancing seriously. As you know, the reason to to flatten the curve, so to speak, was not to try to decrease the number of cases or even decrease the number of deaths, but it was to make sure that we did not overwhelm our healthcare system as we saw happen in Northern Italy and even in New York. And it really looks like we've been successful in doing that as we may very well have reached a peak and a plateau at the current time. So I would just really want everyone to recognize that as we move forward and we move towards normalcy, to recognize that the normal we're going to face is a new normal. It's not going to be exactly like it was two months ago until we have an effective vaccine. So we're going to have to do things differently, but that doesn't mean we can't return to some level of normalcy with the right criteria in place and the right actions in place.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you very much. And I want to give a quick shout out to Mr. Craig Thomas. I received about a week and a half ago, not so pleasant email. And Mr. Thomas believed that his mayor may not be doing enough or could do more. So that really was the impetus for this. And because of Florida sunshine law reasons, I couldn't have our members of city council join us today. So I want to thank my city council. I've got a great city council that we work with and a great team at City Hall. So otherwise, I would have had our members of city council join us here today, but for Florida sunshine law reasons, they can't. But I do, you know, we all get those emails that you don't always appreciate at the time. But where we've been on daily calls and we've been on Skype calls and all of that, sometime when the public doesn't hear from us, they need to hear from us again in this format. So that really was the impetus that started this town hall meeting. Our constituents, I know I always want to err on the side of too much communication and really there at this point, there is no such thing as too much communication. So I really want to thank all of you for being here today. I do have a piece of information that I'd like to read. I was on a call last week with the White House and Dr. Deborah Burks, who, as you know, is President Trump's Coronavirus Response Coordinator. And this is what she had to say. She said a lot of things on the call, but I'd like to share this. So the generosity and the spirit of the American people has been remarkable. And around the globe, you can see that communities have come together to protect one another. And to remember that every day as we're protecting each other, we're decreasing the stress on our amazing healthcare providers because we're decreasing the number of individuals coming into the emergency rooms that are terribly sick and we're decreasing the number of individuals having to go into the intensive care units. This is the work that the American people are doing. Please continue to do this because it is working. We see it. We see it every day. We track these numbers very carefully. It comes back to your messaging, to your communities and how we've done this job and it's it's working. So I just want to end by saying thank you. Thank you for bringing your community advocates and the forefront healthcare workers to this issue. And thank you for your leadership in the communities because we can see it across the board. And this was on a national call with United States Conference of Mayors across the United States, and it was a very, very informative call. At this point, knowing that our call is getting soon, here to wrap up, we had we had advertised this from three to four o'clock. I'd like to turn this over to Andres Paz, a member of our Outreach Committee here in Benita Springs. And for those that may or may not know, just under 25% of our 55,000 residents of Benita Springs are Hispanic and Latino. And we really have worked hard to become more active in that community. I look at the Hispanic community as some of my best friends, brothers and sisters in any which way. And I want to thank Andres Paz for being here with us today to do a recap in Spanish. So Andres, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to be here and to hear all this wonderful feedback and plans and everything that all the leaders are doing for everyone in our community. You have always been very aware of those numbers as far as your Hispanic population. You have been very proactive in communicating and over communicating. And I and I please, I encourage everyone to just keep that number in mind. Numbers in Collier County are are similar to Benita Springs, Lee County, close to 18, almost touching 19% Hispanics. When you have the opportunity and if you have the resources, please look into finding a way to relay that message to the Hispanic community in their language. So with that with that being said, I'm going to switch to Spanish for a little bit and then share with the people that are viewing us how they will be able to access all this information in Spanish, hopefully by tomorrow, by tomorrow morning or by tomorrow at noon. Thank you, Mayor. Muy buenas tardes. Les quiero compartir un poco de la información que se llevó a cabo durante durante esta llamada. Tuvimos a líderes de nuestra comunidad, incluido el CEO del Hospital de Lee Health, el doctor Lawrence Antonucci. Tuvimos a nuestra nuestra senadora estatal Kathleen Pasadomo. Tuvimos a nuestro representante de la Comisión del Condado Lee, Ray Sandelli. Tuvimos también del Benito Springs Fire Control and Rescue, de los bomberos, como le decimos nosotros, al Chief de DeWitt y por supuesto el alcalde de aquí de Bonita Springs, Peter Simmons. El mensaje que nos que nos que nos están compartiendo en estos momentos es es un poco alentador en el sentido de que los números parece que están mejorando. Todo el mundo está siendo un poquito optimista, pero a la vez un poco cuidadoso. Y el mensaje es que todavía tenemos que actuar con mucha mesura, que todavía debemos mantener las reglas del social distancing, de esa distancia que hemos estado manteniendo entre los extraños, entre las personas con las que interactuamos. Y que vamos a salir de este problema básicamente por fases. Este es esta parte de los fases aplica todo, aplica a la salud, aplica a la economía, aplica a la nueva realidad que que vamos a vivir. Muchas personas han preguntado con respecto a cómo pueden acceder a las pruebas del COVID a través de Lee Health. Lee Health tiene dos sitios, dos unidades móviles donde la gente puede tomarse esta prueba, una en Fort Myers y otra en Cape Coral. Y una vez el FDA, que son que es el el ente federal que regula todo este tipo de pruebas, apruebe la segunda tanda de de pruebas. Esto se va a llevar a una mayor escala y se va a poder. Muchas personas dicen, pero en qué momento se va a poder hacer este examen más fácil, más rápido y a mayor personas? Esto viene y viene y viene muy pronto. Con respecto a la capacidad de los hospitales, los hospitales en estos momentos tienen todavía una buena capacidad. Está cerca al 50%. So están preparados para atender a muchos más casos en el caso de que los números tomaran una dirección negativa. Pero en estos momentos hay suficientes camas, hay espacio en las salas de emergencia para atender a las personas que necesitan atención por este virus. Y con respecto a los respiradores, el número de respiradores disponibles en estos momentos, menos del 40% de los respiradores están siendo utilizados. Yo sé que muchas personas tenían miedo que si no van al hospital, si si existen esos respiradores y si están disponibles, es es el caso. Pasó un poco a hablar con respecto a lo que nos dijo la senadora. El gobierno, todas las instituciones, el gobernador, los representantes estatales, nuestros representantes locales como los comisionados o como el alcalde de Bonita Springs, todos están trabajando proactivamente, están teniendo reuniones y llamadas prácticamente a diario para trabajar en el plan de llevarnos a lo más cercano a una nueva realidad con respecto a este virus. Nos piden un poco de paciencia porque existen muchas razones muy válidas por las cuales no han podido, no han podido hacer como ese ese ya decir, podemos estar abiertos, podemos comenzar a hacer esto y lo otro. La mayor razón de estas es porque no quiere mandar a las personas a trabajar hasta que sea seguro y sano para que las personas puedan trabajar. Y entienden que esto genera un gran tipo de problemas como las tasas de desempleo, las personas que en este momento están esperando dinero, que necesitan trabajar, pero consideran que es por el bien, que es por el bien de todos. En todo caso, la comunicación muy importante sigue comunicando, estar pendiente de las noticias, buscar a las autoridades locales para seguir llamando. Y esta toda esta información va a estar disponible para todos a través de la página web de la ciudad de Bonita Springs, a través de las redes sociales de Bonita Springs. Lo que vamos a hacer es vamos a tener la entrevista en inglés y vamos a tener todas las preguntas en español con las respuestas que se dieron en español para que las personas tengan acceso a ellas. Y con eso ya me despido. Muchas gracias por permitirme estar aquí. And that's it for my Spanish part, Mayor. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to be here. I have touched on most of the most important points. And I have invited everyone that wants access to this information in Spanish to visit our website tomorrow and our social media for answers.
Wonderful. Thank you, Andres. That's very, very important. Thank you for being part. And I want to thank, at this point, I want to thank Dr. Antonucci from Lee Health, State Senator Kathleen Pasadomo, County Commissioner Ray Sandelli, Chief Greg DeWitt. And I want to remind everybody if they need to get a hold of us or see receive this rebroadcast, obviously Benita Springs TV 98 and the various channels from the Comcast and the different providers in town, if they ever, anybody is not sure how to get a hold of me at City Hall, 239 949 6262 or by email at peter.simmons@cityofbenitasprings.org. O R G. And I once again, thank you, everybody. Stay safe. Stay healthy. And I will close today's meeting with a prayer. Dear Lord and King of Glory, thank you for revealing your love to us today in a very powerful way. As you can see, we're going to leave this place now and close this meeting. Please go out and may there be hope to go in the power of the Holy Spirit. May your grace and love be with us, Lord, not only today in these trying times, but every day. Bless us, oh Lord, with your unfailing love and cause the work of our hands to prosper. Uphold us in the palm of your hands, Lord, and see us through each stage of our lives. Bless us when we get to go out and when we come in. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Everybody, please stay safe. God bless. And we're going to sign out now from our Benita Springs COVID-19 Tele Town Hall. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe and God bless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.